Okay, so this is a workshop and we'll not be believing on the game today. Um, so I'm gonna skip number three and go to number four. The board called budget block section to discuss fire services and solid waste with this quarter twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Good luck with your plan. Well, Danielle has a recap for us from any actions taken so far and then our fire chief has a presentation for you.
I just kinda put together some of the stuff that I ended up discussing in the first two workshops. So, the first one was, um, actual review of the capital management plan. Twenty seven thousand was taken out of general funds for the county extension truck. We, um, I've taken the budget based on the capital list that we wanna provide because there were a few additions to the general fund budget as well as what was the one cent was gonna take it for us. We'll receive an additional funding in the solid waste fund. It was discussed on the allocation of twenty five percent of the one cent sales tax to the hospital for the three years. And the change of the additional work squad. The cost for the general fund was thirty thousand and each commissioner, um, allocated fifty five hundred from their district funding on the way to secondary rotating. And so with those changes, the impact of what we've done so far, it changed the general fund reserves with capital improvement. It decreased by sixty four thousand to, but it's still thirty one and sixty one. Um, the general fund is still on deposit by seventy six thousand nine twenty eight after the work squad change. Red res total budget increased by one hundred eighty three thousand eight forty four due to the change in capital request. But the capital expense insurance was funded with the one cent money, so it's offset. Secondary rotating total budget amount stayed the same after the addition of the new work squad. The only thing that changed was the additional funding. Solid waste total budget increased by seventy one thousand due to the increase in revenues from the regional landfill of fifty two thousand seven eleven as well as the addition of the capital request and what the other funds for capital request are funded by the one cent money. So, that changed all of that. And the small county surtax budget now reflects the changes in the transfer of capital as well as the addition of the twenty five percent now. So, that's it.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I would like to start off saying to everyone involved in these workshops, thank you, because I'd rather run into a burning building than do this every year. So, um, just real quick, the, I guess after one of the last workshops, there was a little bit of concern about we were only quitting improvements in the coastal area. Um, so, uh, wanted to go with me and we wanted to look at alternative options, how we could look at the phases, um, to try to distribute it better over the entire county. Uh, like we said before, the phases are, um, we can treat it all apart. It doesn't have to be, this is an ironclad thing. Um, so what we kinda went back and looked at is instead of doing the, the second person in scene action and the heat beach position, we went back and said, well, what if we added another person in station one? So, if that's who we're taking, the firefighter for station two that's in phase three, we're gonna say, let's hire that person and we're just gonna put him in station one for now because that's the countywide response truck.
Which one?
Wanted at the airport. Like, but that's the one that goes to every home in the county. Um, so this way, we would put that additional person. So, this way, all of our citizens would get an additional pay per hour. Um, and we would still have the heat beach position and go twenty four hours. Um, but instead of only isolating all of our work to the coastal area, we would table the stations that one for future funding, but try to, try to more evenly balance it.
Did you get a call from October, uh, October River Land in there? How long does it take you for the time you get the call to get there?
It can take twenty to twenty five minutes. Cause we're leaving from the airport going down there now. We also had a couple of volunteers in at these companion stations and they would be caged out for their response. Um, and they do pretty good work. We don't get a lot of injury or work from them just because they're, well, we have to hunt. Um, but they do a lot of exterior work for us, operating the pump, uh, the pumps and the showroom water. Um, but like then, we've had in the pond, you medical hall of course, and they provide CPR and they actually save lives down there. So, we're very thankful for our volunteers we have in that area. But as far as the gate booth concern, it can take over twenty, twenty five minutes depending on what your truck's intent.
That's a long way down.
And, and a lot of times, we know when we're, uh, certain types of calls, we'll plan ahead and we'll say, okay, we're gonna sit and one person in the large engine, but we'll send one of the people in, one of the smaller rough trucks, squad trucks, cause those go a lot faster than we can. So, we, we do our best to try to cut that time as much as we can.
How fast will we break them?
An engine will go maxed out seventy five mile an hour. That is.
That'll be fast.
And just because of the size and the way, you know, we're not really want those going much faster than that. Um, the smaller trucks, we can get up to maybe about a feet. Again, just for weight reasons and safety reasons, they should go around so they don't go in fast enough.
And that's the question. Now, the plan that you just laid out there would be at station one, which is at the airport here. We would add one position, which is station three.
Yes, one, one percent.
And one more would go to the heat beach.
We would have one, one full time twenty four hour position at heat beach.
And where are you gonna fill it?
Well, right now, we have three in Perry County, the office.
How many do we?
The county goes to own do the office. So, what we would, by this plan, the alternative plan, what we would have is, we have the safer grant that we received, you know, like a lot last year. Um, so we have that position already. So, we would need to add two more people to make that instead of being Monday through Friday. We wanted, we wanna provide twenty four hour coverage.
Three preparing and two finishing, so that's about what you can get. Two, two, two running time.
And three. And then, the idea is, we're hiring that position ahead of time because we want to move that one. When we get to rebuild station two, we would move that one further north to provide more coverage, shorter response time to the northern part of it.
Which station is it?
Station two is currently open and pneumatic, but we've identified that that needs to be re.
Yeah, that one is. That is one I think we could get. One, hit me on the, on the, yeah. That we, what they have. Now, let me ask this question. Is the option still available to us to do the fire stuff or is that, or is that dead?
This year's debt.
It's dead. So, then all many other options that I know is a little decrease.
For this year's debt.
For this year's.
And I believe it was point two, three for all.
What you're thinking, Bill, is you figure out, are you, we thought all my positions. Now, you know, I've asked some justice. The property department is asking for our new position. And we've spoken for the big engineering position.
And supervisor relations.
And what plan?
Supervisor relations, that's the one you did.
Yeah, supervisor relations. Now, when you add a guy or people at one hand, to one department, I'm thinking about criticism that I'm already hearing a little bit about. And if you cannot give me the ratings, and yet you're doing, you're hiring all these people. Yeah. So, I'm thinking, um, if we can just do the safer grant, that's two people, right? And anything is better than that. And all of it hits two people. There's still any people visiting.
Yes.
But it wasn't even with about less than ten of a mill or two positions.
For the station one?
Well, for, if we did just station six, we were, we budgeted at about one forty five.
One forty five.
So, all five positions would be worth four.
So, all be less than one tenth of a mill. Um, and then I thought this. Savannah County over the last fifteen or twenty years, our respective numbers have been population of about one, two thousand. It's grown very little. One night, uh, over the last two years, we've been around by a hundred people. We've made a lot of changes. So, if you look at it on a population basis, you can't justify drawing the fire department at a very rapid pace. Now, by doing this on sound, we have a new bunch of out of town people. Most of them south of the county, they've got three new positions, basically, the United D B B. But you have to look at that. You have a community of twenty two thousand, how much fire service can we justify and provide?
Well, wanted to get something that, I think, is all right with that.
You went down.
Get something that shows that progress has increased on.
I believe it's there in three years.
Now, hey, it's a little bit of that. Now, the power brings that total over to the rear. We may have a couple in the past and, uh, we may get a broken guy, he didn't put fire stations over there near that. But, but I know this plan that you laid out, it's a long range plan. Yeah. You didn't order all the copies. Well, I know you ordered, but you're not gonna get all the copies today. And I'm saying all of this. You know, a young man who's been here before the Lord numerous times. And I very suspect why he has a fire case. And I like the fact that you believe in plan and you laid out a, a long range plan. But my thinking is maybe, uh, take it as a little smaller step because we're not growing. And it's not a good, and maybe what you get is better than nothing.
That's on that?
Yes.
I, don't argue that at all, yes. Any, any step that's in, you know, and it's a step in the right direction. But as you're saying about the population, I would just like to add on to that we're also looking at it. It's a growth of our, of our career levels, our, our pay that we know is always at twenty four percent. But we also need to balance that with, we have a reduction in our volunteer service. Despite our best effort, we're seeing a reduction in that. We get volunteers every, every once in a while and they stay for a little while and they leave. Um, but compared to where we were ten years ago, we have a lot less volunteers. So, it's, I'm, I'm just asking, you know, that that be considered, that it's not necessarily us ballooning up our fire service. It's having to further augment a little bit more career disaster because we don't have the volunteers anymore.
Well, that, no, and it's true. If I, if I may, I don't, you know, this is my, I'm, I'm, my thoughts. I don't see it as, um, you know, our population is, my thing is saying on decrease and, and we're trying now to M one S of, um, probably more, um, staff members to the fire department. But could it be that maybe all this time, we've been locally under staffed anyway? And it's not like we're trying to really augment something that's already great, but we're just trying to get up to a standard. Is that wrong or not?
I would agree with you.
And then, so.
Because, uh, in, in the, in the long term plan, this is not designed to make us look like Tallahassee or Gainesville. We'll never read that and I guarantee we're not trying to get there. But in, that's where in, in the plan, we've established one person, one, one firefighter, a shift level position at these outlined stations, augment our volunteers. Um, and that's one, like, because it's kinda where we should already be at, you know? Cause then like when we've seen the plan where it shows all the, the times and response time, we're trying to be able to, all those red categories, get those.
And what concerns me is I know that you have not the proper number of firefighters available to go when they go to a scene. Uh, I don't think you've been able to have one on the ground and two inside or whatever your formula is.
Yeah, and that's.
Not been able to do that. I, I've heard from firefighters in the past.
Yes.
About their concern for not having the backup there when they go into a, um, a burning.
And that's one of the, if we take the, the second person, that would be future station two, if we put that at station one, that gives us a four, a four person company there that will always have that two in, two out. And what that is, anytime we show up, if we send two firefighters into a burning building, perhaps we two outside that if somebody goes wrong, they can go get us. Uh, and that gives us, as soon as we show up, we got this.
Well, you know, I know that, um, Bruce came over and, and he gave us his presentation about he needed another staff person and I see him, the budget were demanded to have a staff person. But if it comes down to cutting a firefighter versus a staff person, to me, that's a no brainer. Uh, you know, cause they've been operating, it'd be nuts for them to have it and I, I hope we can give it to them. But if it comes down to fire, fire safety or a staff person, I, I.
And Bruce, like, can say that, or maybe go, anything that is better. Um, any, any, one more set of boots on the ground is a big deal for us. Um, we had structured fires Friday where we ended up bringing those coastal stations to town because we were all completely wrapped up into, into this fire, which was down a really, really long driveway, that there wasn't no, we're gonna break off and take another call. So, those, those crews were moved, so if we had any other calls in the county, we had those people there. Um, if it hadn't been Monday to Friday, eight to five, it wouldn't have just been one person providing that countywide coverage for us. Uh, and that's what we're, we're looking for is saying, how can we put ourselves in better spot? I'm very proud of our firefighters, but we, we do a very good job of making sure we answer every call. Um, but like, we wanna make sure we're doing the safest way possible and look the best way possible.
Now, phase one, as we're now today, how much money did you need for phase one?
Phase one, as, as comparing, um, as we presented, three fifty five.
How about you guys, three fifty five hundred? It's the same, it's the same total.
Well, if it was, it just attributed, okay, three fifty five.
The alternative plan, it was three fifty five.
Three fifty five hundred, okay.
So, it's, it's the same as it was when we originally presented it, but instead of putting that extra person in scene action, we're, we're saying, let's, let's move it to town instead. So, instead of only being in that area, it's whole county.
And if we eliminated the, uh, positions that have been asked for from the property equator and supervisor relations, that goes around a hundred thousand right there. But that's something that all.
Now, that comes out of the general fund.
Yeah, we can make some changes.
That would have to have any effect on.
That's, that's, I think that's not, that's not.
You ever come out with a business figure over the two?
On the, it would be one point sixty five zero, so it, it would go up point oh five seven three. So, on somebody that paying her a thousand dollars or something like that.
Yeah, how much?
Five dollars.
Five dollars, that enough. You know, and four two three is not a lot. Four two three is, uh, hundred thousand dollars, twenty three dollars, maybe. That's a, a big cap, not expect me all much with this. Probably, uh, that's a little less than a hundred. And. One dollar, one dollar was extra there, but one dollar was five dollars. It's just a matter, I want to get something today, cause she's been here years time. And I want to say again, I appreciate all the work that you put into this. Uh, I like to leadership skills and whether it's two or whether it's five, I can live where the, the roots of the whole comes up. So, I want you to start doing today, again.
I, I, cause it's a thing, we're not, you know, with, with the self tax, if there really any self again, but we never thought it on how we were gonna do, give you up that self tax. I mean, we never calculated since twenty five percent, twenty five percent, also like everything. Again, how was that proposed, like, last week?
It's last week.
No, it was again, in the beginning.
Well, that is.
I'm gonna say, where's the that round?
Twenty five percent is going to the sheriff for one more fiscal year based upon how, how, how it currently before last week's discussion. It's the only allocation that we currently have in place for this fiscal year.
So, we still got, so we have to spend that we can.
But we've allocated twenty five percent to the office, to the office. But, but we can't spend this money for his needs.
Well, we're already paying for the lease for the new fire truck out of one cent money. So, we've already.
And you can't pay dollars now, now that you're operating one thing. Yeah, so, so that's, that's.
That's what I.
That's it. Oh, we could.
I'm gonna turn you.
Yeah. Tell me, how many people you got down at the airport? At the airport, our normal staffing is one firefighter, two firefighters, the three at the airport. That's three people per countywide response.
Only three. Well, you got a half, two of them.
Okay. That's the most, we gotta make any day, three people or four or five. Yeah, the most we have, we have, we have any given day at the airport is three and our minimum staffing level is two. So, if somebody falls out, we have a minimum level before we guarantee that somebody's mandatory on overtime.
That's close to you and then.
Yeah, well.
Why not, you can just at the airport?
Right.
You'll, 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 you'll be contacting.
Yeah, but like I said, that's Monday to Friday, yes, I go countywide myself and then even if it's midnight, if they call, if they make the phone call, it says, hey, we need the fire chief time.
Yeah, and you got another officer down there too, what, two of them?
A lieutenant on shift. Like, so we have a lieutenant on that manages, uh, the crew on daily. He's the initial, uh, incident commander on any call.
What about four people? What I'm trying to get at, how many people you got down there? You don't have a fire today all day. So, if you got five people, there's just fun. Even though they're officers and whatnot, even if it's a team, you know, if it was a big city where you had to have, you know, you need somebody to make out a shift review and, and have other officers do to do, I can see that. But you had, how many fires last month?
I have to go back and look at it.
My three, four.
And, well, I mean, it's, it's more than just, we run, it's not just big fire department, fire rescue. We run a, a, a.
We have, you have the rescue group and the hospitality, EMS and all that.
I said, we, we do a, a, a whole bunch of different, different operations out there. It's one of those, if you don't know who to send, send a fire department.
Yeah, but let me tell you, we, 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 we put ourselves in this place to do a good job, captain what we say and what we do. All I'm trying to do is get it just a big goal, getting other people on staff. Cause when they look at it and say, oh, we talked every individual in the county, ten dollars more per year, bring two more people in, it's a bite in the ass, it don't rank. So, what I'm trying to do is get, get it out there so when, when, when people see, two new people hired with fire force, they don't see somebody coming and making sixty thousand a year. They see people in need and then it would be sixty dollars more by tax bill or whatever. So, that's, that's the form you're trying to get. What we have to do is fully obviously get, I mean, making out for the fuck, because when they, the little stuff they talk about, the people you just saw, I see the fire truck down there, ten, I see the fire truck down there. Uh, a pop out, but all this stuff, you know, that's wrong for me. But when people need help, I, I see them. And that's.
And like I said, and that's where you're, like I said, cause take the one at the airport, that we have the three firefighters on foot myself, Monday to Friday. And if I'm off or out of town, it's three, possibly two. And, and you're, and I agree with what you're saying and, you know, there are times when it's like, oh, we only have, how many fires do you actually have? But when we have that fire in the middle of summer, that, I mean, time after time, we're having to figure out ways to fight the fires to two hundred people. And it's a, it's a very extensive process that, you know, and it's hard to really to put that into words. And so, you see the firemen out there, um, just dripping sweat and giving everything they've got and, you know, and when they get to the point where they get up to go put on another air pack and go back inside and they, you know, they don't, they don't have anything more to give. Um, it's, it's hard to really put that into words and it's hard to explain that. I mean, it, it's, it's, and so you see it for the first time.
Yeah.
And when, when you really realize, oh, yeah, that's, that's why they needed that, that one commander would have made a full work.
Well, another part of that, I feel, um, is when you go and, and most people are cleaning their four or five, what you know, when they need fireworks, you know, hope the doggy don't, yeah, eat meat. But if you, we need, we need to be people, look on the ground, doing what they can do.
And the other one, see myself, and, and that, you know, I very often go through these blocks pretty, pretty fast when I get on the fire team. Uh, but when I show up on the team, especially the larger house fires and stuff, my role on that is, is not to put on a gear and go inside, not closely. Mine is to be, stay outside in command, be in command, everybody, cause when they're going inside, they can't see the big picture. Um, I basically play a chess game, um, on the outside, just moving pieces around. Um, and that's one of those, when you're planning, I'm gonna look, look at and say, how many of my people do I have? How many are that adults that, you know, I can't send them back in. They, they will willingly do it, but I need to be of the rest tonight if that is not safe. And that's part of, you know, my job in big incidents is, you know, using my twenty years of experience to manage.
Sure. Okay. But let me tell you, I, I, I would look at, uh, through these, uh, and we can say, what does the field county do that? Field county is good at responding to the need, so you could have the number one thing out of fifteen. So, my answer to you is, the only thing I wanna get out is that if this only costs me twenty dollars a year to hire two more people to do fire force, I can only. No breath, no breath.
Oh, I have to add, sorry. I have, um, a participant that called me and called me and everyone was on him. He was talking about the fire trucking business, the fire trucking business. And so, when I asked administration, which is part of current, um, if I've been back in the job, and he said, listen, he said, uh, others, your union contract, they are allowed a lunch break and that you're allowed to go and eat when you can. So, once I told him that, he kind of listened to me a long time, but y'all, y'all are allowed that lunch break. It's the same thing that you'll see the animals down there sometimes, but that's a week, I may be cooked some.
Yeah, most of the time, they try to go shopping and they, you know, and there's always, why are we paying for that? But they're there for twenty four hours, um, at a time and like, they've, they've got, you know, they've got to eat their food. And then, and like you just said, you know, sometimes they, one time goes by, cause they're on a call and when you're done or doing whatever, yeah, um, grab something real quick. So, yeah, from time to time, you know, they'll, they'll go out and eat and, and generally what we see from the public is, um, they're not usually a surplus about that. Um, and our guys do a really good job, cause when the kids and everything see the fire truck in the parking lot, they take them over and they let them fit in the truck and they, you know, let's take pictures and stuff like that.
I want to say one other thing too. I have come up on the red, one of my time and saw you there. I've seen you on the big truck, I've seen you and other persons working the town. So, there's an accident, y'all are there. Y'all are there. Marty?
I was just gonna point out that, that what they assume and don't see is how many times they have to get up and leave their crew where they're out eating because they have to respond to a call. The second thing is, there are a lot high hazard areas now as they cover. They got the, the chimeras, they got the anthems, they got the buckeye, they got way more high risk areas than they used to have to cover. So, I mean, to justify a couple extra people is not a hard thing to do.
I don't see how we can deny.
I can't deny.
Wait, I don't see how we can, they're conscious, deny your request.
I didn't, they're not. But, but they used to have a fire truck, they still have.
They have, they, they still have a fire truck, they have a fire brigade, I mean, they have. They have, they, they still have a fire truck, they have a fire every day, I think they had on any given day fifty-five of their, of their firefighters there. Um, but their truck isn't a full fire truck, it's more, more of the size of a road truck, it has a small little tank on it, and then they work off of just the height and pressure and stuff out there. Um, if they had any significant fires, it would be handled by.
Okay, that's.
Chimneys, pace, land that left me, do they have any kind of fire protection system?
Um, as far as like, like fire days.
Fire truck, yeah.
You know, vessels, and definitely they'll build from vessels, and I'm gonna actually in a water system, so we'd have hydrants and everything out there, um, chimneys not so much, um, but not as far as firefighters. Chimneys, we used to have a little, a little team with a, with everywhere in case their flares caused brush fires, but that stopped, I think, uh, eight years ago. So, no, there's no, no fire protection.
Yeah, it's, uh, one.
I, I wanted to hear Mr. Lou, and then I have a suggestion, now we can move this thing forward, and you got to hear him.
I'm gonna say, out of all the points, I've got complaints from my constituents, I've never got one complaining about the fire department. I say that, uh, there's a couple of the points I have got complaints about, but I've never had anybody complain, I've always heard good things about the fire department. Now, back in my, I'm a candidate, uh, people don't think about a fire truck, they think most, you know, most people don't, but I've talked to a lot of people in my district, and they're fine with an increase in the tax, they're admitted. I'm sure we got fire trucks, good fire trucks, and, and responsible people, so, I'm down with it.
Yeah, I, I know the thing too, uh, I agree, uh, I want, I, part of our job is to, um, protect our citizens, and so I'm all for having good coverage, like you're talking about, but also, I wanna protect the firefighters that we have who are going in, that they've got somebody that, when they are exhausted, and so, or whatever, I want, when they go in, I want them to come out, say.
We need to buy, we need to buy a Ford instead of a Cadillac, I understand that, but we need to make sure it's just like office, you got to have fire trucks, you got to have arms, you got to have office, um, yeah.
Commissioner?
I, I've got a suggestion about the fair. That we instruct staff to factor in a point two, three, million, three, ten digits, because it comes back in ours for a public hearing. And once we establish today, a million dollar, point two three, or point, whatever, a smaller number, we can't exceed that, we can back up on it, so reset point two, three. Then we can go over that, come August, but we can lessen it down to that smaller number, if by then we've got more input from our citizens. And I'll, I'll support that, Marty, if you all want to start with two, you set the million to that, I'll support even one.
I thought it was a one point two three, was you saying point two three?
That gives you five people, the Lord talked about five or two.
Phase one, every time we talk about, when I talked about earlier, that's the point two, three.
Point two three, three and eight.
That gives us three more people in Perry, and two more at, at T V, T V. Now, the other option with the lower number would give us two people, T V, so that's our cost right now, that we cost out.
And tomorrow you'll tentatively set it, and then we'll have tomorrow even in our first.
Well, I'm just throwing out a thought, we, we gotta decide which, which million dollar we wanna set it at. But if we're gonna give a man any, so the man, if our department's any consideration at all, you can set it somewhere higher than two of them.
Right. And then you can come in at our first.
But you always come down, it can't go up.
Right, what's the difference between a hundred and a one number?
Fifteen dollars more than a hundred and ten dollars.
If you do the phase one, it would make your mileage rate be a total of one point four zero one zero. One point one four? One point four zero one zero would be your total amount to use to do the phase one, and if you did just the two positions, it would make it be one point two two five zero. And that difference is only point one seven. It's one point one two, um, if you do the two positions, it'll be one point, what is it, one point one two? Um, right now it's one point one six seven seven.
Two positions is one point what?
Two positions would be one point two two five zero.
And?
And your five positions or phase one would be one point four zero one zero.
Now, that doesn't make sense. And it all adds up to the number, you know, guy, if, if you can hire five people for the same price, you can hire two, five, five. I'm just.
Now, if you do five positions, that would increase to three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, which would make your mileage rate go up to one point four zero one zero.
I was talking about the additional bit. Now, if you hire, if you do five people, the mileage is gonna go up by point two, three. If you do two positions, the mileage is gonna increase by how much?
Five point zero five seven three.
Point zero five seven three. And that's five dollars.
Five point two.
For, for a hundred thousand, six dollars for a hundred thousand. There's nobody on plus, I don't think about that now. What you hear is, where do you wanna set again, the number, yeah, tomorrow.
What do you think?
What do you think, Dylan?
I do think, I do with six dollars.
With six dollars?
That's a, that's a tip in the right way, yeah.
Go for it.
All right, let's go for it, all right, like I said, it's not the third and that.
That is right.
That's right.
So then you know that's an increase of forty-three or two. No, and that's.
No, that's, that's one of those, that's.
Seven three.
And that's what I'm saying to you. Now, like, you, you, now, far enough, for sure, you put the position where you need it in the works. And that, with that one, that'll turn, you can get that point four, I think. Well. Well, we talked about that, and then, then, um, Jim said he wanted to go with the one or whatever, there's the other two that, that's a small number.
Yeah, okay, with, with the higher, we can always. Higher, you can come down, if that's what you need, yeah, I'll try.
No, I, I'm, I'm, all right, we, we changed it, uh, four, two, three, and then we, all right, we'll come back then.
Yes, and that would give you five.
That would give us being higher, and then we have.
I feel good about that.
So we still got a decision, make five versus two, or three, or whatever, after we've had a focus group.
And I, you know, I want to say that, you know, we think about privilege, this is something that's greatly needed about community, and I, and our job is to help the public understand what we're doing in terms of protecting them, um, and that's our duty. So, um, it, I feel like this is something that we have to do, we, we've got to provide you with what you need to protect the people and to protect your firefighters.
And it's, and it's like, I think all of you said, you know, it's, it's one of those things that every person doesn't think about the fire service, and we're probably our worst, our, our worst enemy, because, like I said, I'm very proud of our people, but they probably think they have more service than they, you know, than they do, because we put out fires fast, we get there, and it's the fastest we can, and they probably don't realize how hard we have to work to get to that point. And even when we add, say, we give open any positions, we're not gonna stop working that hard, we're still gonna work that hard, it's gonna make, make us look like even, you know, even more, like I said, we, we, we try to make the most of everything we have, and, and like I said, but the average person doesn't realize what exactly we need, because, like I said, you don't think about the fire trucking until you're helping fire.
Right, well, the citizens are getting something for their money, they're handling it more, but they're getting something in return, and that's fire protection, plus all the other things to assist to in emergency. Now, looking forward to next year, you know, we talked about trying to get another additional one set, we can just the one, one point five, but, and, and it might be something that we wanna do, if we can't, if we decide to do that, to include the fire department on that too, and make it so that it will fund, uh, salaries back.
Right, now, Jim?
Yeah.
One of my constituents, two, is a volunteer firefighter, a volunteer here, also, we ought to write a pass from a citizen for to be here, with our option guard, we're gonna be in five positions or two, and we need additional fire people.
We need additional fire personnel, uh, we've got volunteer firemen, but according to what time of day it is, that the fire occurs, uh, and sometimes, well, I might be out of town, and we've got a fire, and I, I hear it, I get back here sooner than I can, but, uh, the fire department is in need of additional fire personnel.
New, excellent, excellent, okay.
I have a hundred percent.
You want to go over here?
Okay, well, we're gonna, I think we, we can help you out.
All right, and then, then we'll be in, then we'll go back to the office, all right?
Okay.
My, we leave.
I, I wanna thank you for your power of working, your patience, um, like Commissioner Page said, you've been for several times, and most of the time you said no, but, uh.
And he said, he said yes to, but I, uh, I just, like I said, I come, you feel like, I'm like, somebody should start getting annoyed with me at this point, but, no, we appreciate them, that the Lord has done for us, um, it, it's not, it's not forgotten, you know, we, we've got a new truck sitting in our bed, it wasn't ever bombed, we're, we're thankful for everything, but, but my job is to make sure you're aware of stuff that we do.
And we thank you and the fire department, and please tell them so.
Yeah, we, we've done, it's more disappointing, I think, all this stuff, yeah.
Okay, solid waste. This is all lead away.
All lead away, all solid waste. I've thought more, and prayed more, I've thought less, because you let me, uh, the fire class, because I never listened to it, and you wouldn't leave if you felt I did. I want to remind all of us to be with it, that in our last meeting with officials, advised the board to be very careful in how you approach the cost of solid waste, and to uniform, and the people that pay the most are the people that gets the most service, or is that the other way? If their, their services that you get must be, I guess, commensurate, is that a good word? Don't put that, put it, must be proportionate, services must be proportionate, must be that, with free meat and honey cats, and solid waste. Now, I know it costs probably thirty thousand dollars to do the stuff, like we get on fire trucks, to know if we're charging or overcharging, honey cats and RVs, but unless we have that information available to us to justify what we're doing, then our company has advised us to run a rescue. So, question is, is where we're gonna get thirty thousand, or whatever it costs to do stuff?
They told me thirty last time, and it's probably fifty this time.
I told them, the one that we have fifty thousand in, well, I'll get Daniel, we can fund it without doing any, any solid waste. And then they'll take all the year for the study that we completed. And then next year, we'll have that information available to us, and if this study, loss comes back and says, honey cats all about a payment, three dollars, then that's gonna be what it is. If they ought to be paying full amount, that'll be what it is, that way you've got something to base your decision on. I can't support today doing anything with the, uh, the RVs and solid waste until I have the data and justification to do it. Now, I still believe in the fact that we've got a hundred forty versus a hundred fifty four. I promised the most, and I'm bad at that, promising things, can't do it wrong, so I, that I wouldn't increase that hundred in, at that point, will increase that until it's version made fair. We've, we've got to have some money, you know, to get the money, to do the study to make it fair, I think, I consider it fair.
I can't just, uh, going up on one forty.
I, I can't, I can't up, I've been committed.
They were, they were quit paying the one forty, we didn't charge everybody the same time, they said people.
Same thing I'm missing, I, I. I want to go up on the one forty, and then we get the other part right.
Well, he said you could go up for forty, so if you went from one forty to one fifty four, then all the honey cats and RVs would go up also, they wouldn't be less than their current, uh, 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 rate, they would go up the same percentage, I guess it would reach, that's about percentage.
Five dollars, I mean, when they care tires, and washing cans, and sofas, and mattresses up there, just like everybody up there, and my constituents, nine out of ten I talk to, only everybody on the same page. But when they cut down trees, and they all just, they live in a camper, they're gonna cut down trees, and they're gonna hold them to the dump, and they're gonna care mattresses, and they're gonna care eye sockets, hair and dukes, tires, I mean, that's, that's where I'm at with it, yeah. And people, the ones who pay the most taxes that I talk to, now, only everybody on the same page.
And I agree, because just like I said before, there are people living in RVs and sheds that, um, that are full-time residents in those sheds and RVs, and they have things in some of them, and I know they have to be generating the same amount of garbage as a single apartment in some places that lives in place of one forty, that generates very little, uh, garbage. Um, but one thing that I want to have, see happen, is, I don't, and I don't know whose department it is, if it's the tax commissioner or ours, if somebody needs to go down every road in Hager County, every district, and if there is a shed, and it's being lived in full-time, and they've got an extended course going over to mama's house or the friend's house, then, uh, those people need to be paying their year.
You got four firefighters down there, I don't know who's the one collecting service and one worry, I mean, and, and they can generate the same amount of garbage as a house that rent them and lots.
Now, who's would do that, who, who would they trust for doing that? I believe it would be the tax commissioner, and I can, I may remit to the president. But y'all, what do y'all think, that's.
Why is the code not forcing off to that?
Could he put the code of force off, perhaps, start going down and, and making a list of people that are living in sheds and RVs that, that are there full-time?
I don't know, property friends, and then he's got folks out there who's.
I think the fact.
He's gonna be writing on a note there, I saw this, right this way.
I don't know that the code of force, I'm, so we could not relay that information, but as far as actually field people can do this, I do believe the fact.
I think it was the law.
Yes, you do now, as part of that. Could we get more on, on class, that we, what would we make if we have it because we still have remaining revenue, or what would be the problem with, to handle that? Well, I think, um, first of all, we, we need to check and see what, what they're doing now, because I believe they do make field checks, I don't, and, and I don't know the process that they do, but we can certainly communicate with the tax collector and ask what's your process, and, um, to ensure that they're not missing any money. Yeah, and, uh, do you want to come back with us with, uh, our, your time, and see what it will take to do, 'cause I, I'm, I'm just, I'm thinking on mine that we are missing revenue. Well, and I believe that there was a question about people who have RVs and claim home state extension, should they, should we make sure that they're paying the full amount? And I, I think that was another suggestion that I heard, and I don't know what their, their current process is for that. Well, they're quite a home state, you know, that kind of thing, that they're, that they're living there, but you know, this, this is about looking at their electric power bill, if they've got a extended course running over somebody else's. If they've got a, a extension cord running over somebody else's house, that's not gonna reflect, uh, what's really happening there.
So, if you don't get confirmation, you're left alone in trouble. So, those thousands, if you see those down in the coastal area, if the resident in the home has confirmation, then they love confirmation.
Well, but people got two things, they're, uh, camping there, and, you know, they need to be paying too, if they're, if they're paying their, uh, more than just one, that's easy, that's right.
I'll go back to mine. Specifically on this case. How can we do anything as far as charging anybody anything? Well, the RVs and the hunting camps, we can first help some agents, some experts. Who comes in here, he studies our situation in our county itself. We need to divide up all the RVs, that people live in full-time, pay the full amount, or, uh, if they're there half the time, and, and, and it becomes an administrative nightmare. And I'm a little bit conflicted on that, but I feel uneasy in going against the advice of our attorney on doing anything like that to that, that the RV, hunting camp situation.
So, probably we do that, uh, study. We're gonna come up with the issue, those people who dump C and Ds in household garbage collection.
Well, that would be...
If they're paying for that, then you'll probably get some recognition that the C and D's not dumping C and D.
That's right, and I was gonna ask, because this, whoever does this, if they identify, um, the ones that are, have the extension cord on, or, did they go out and actually move them? If they could take data that we have on record, because if they could take data and have on record then...
I don't know.
Because if you don't separate the C and D, it all goes to the roll, but, and you don't have an idea of how much C and D's taken there, then you're, and they should start doing some surveys. You'll have any track record.
Could we just, uh, perhaps, uh, see, we need more information, how much would it cost? What exactly would they do? What would they deliver? What kind of results would they deliver to, uh...
And would they study the whole thing, the C and D issues, whether it's the RVs?
Yeah.
I can't, I, I might keep about that, I can't just go and get a thousand dollars out of somebody, just don't sit and give her and rig her out. You know, I'm not into that.
No.
But they don't, we're at the point where we're running behind on our funding for solid waste, okay? I mean, we need, we need to do something. A person that's worried about an extra hundred dollars a year is not gonna sue you anyway. If that's what he's worried about getting sued, if that attorney's worried about getting sued, and that's what he worries about. But if a person's worried about another hundred dollars a year, I'm gonna sue you another way. If you can't get a attorney who talks to you for a hundred dollars, I mean, I mean, that, that's just common sense. What, what's yours to do? I suggest that we go for it, and make it even, and talk, and I talked to a hundred people in my district about this. And they did not, the people who said one forty did not have a clue that their neighbor that lived in a camper, they didn't, wasn't paying the same thing. I mean, and it, it upset them, everybody needs to be on the same page. I mean, that, that ain't it. I'm not, I'm not the one to do, I'm not my judge. The people said, "You mean they're not paying the same thing?" I said, "No, they're not." And they said, "Well, they got three, and then they go," and they said, "My neighbor haul, haul the old campers in them." And saying, "Actually, that part of the camper, I don't know if going into the dump, that, you know, I mean, I talked to people, several of it, and y'all did." And I mean, I'm not just talking about my, I'm talking about several of it. Constitutional through this, and you're, and everybody, every person does not know their neighbor not paying the same thing or...
Well, it does make a big difference, and you know, the business with the hunting camps, if you, if you can afford the, the camp, the, 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 what do you call it?
The camp, what are you, I'm not gonna...
The truck, if you can afford the truck thing, if you can afford all those dogs and the feed them all year long, and the big truck that goes with, and all the guns, and all the ammunition, and everything else, and you can't pay another hundred dollars? That, that kind of, I don't, I don't quite understand that.
And they can drive all the way through from Tampa?
That's right, you know, so people that are in that hunt, just, most of them have money. Martin?
I was just gonna say, why don't you do like we do when we do salary surveys, why don't you call some of these other counties? I'm sure, but they got surveys done, like Swanee and Columbia. I know that Taylor County has one of the lowest harvest seasons here. You know, I think Gary's already done that.
Who's done that?
And, and you're right, we did.
Well, you know, I give you that information from the counties out there, and most of them got some, I think Columbia County was the only one with, uh, Dixie County was the same, and they got that sort of, uh... A lot of them don't bother with those issues, they, they check the light bill, you know, I, I can give you all that stuff.
Now, Dixie County charges, like Jim, he did, whether it's a hunting camp, or a RV, or a house, you all pay the same. That's what Dixie County does. I talked to their attorney, that, and then what their commission, and the rest of the county won't cut nothing without those dollars. But I think that, I mean, that's just, after a stall on the dark state, it's a C and D, that's, that's...
Yeah, I saw him, I heard him, I know he's a local store.
Come back to my...
Well, they get some, same amount, it's still right.
All right.
Thank you, Tom, I want to hear from you.
I want to hear.
Now, it's, uh, I only had a five, one forty to kill me, that he said, "We mentioned, uh, whole river, the three river, whatever it is now," saying, "We don't allow him that three months out a year."
Same here, I mean.
But he didn't feel like the other, uh, the work. But I talked to a master of it, who's paying that hundred and forty dollars, a hundred and forty one dollars, he'll like, everybody can pay it, but... He has the right, and he claims a spot in the system where he can get every month. So, he felt like everybody else can pay. I've had someone who like him, says, "They didn't know, they knew what they're paying a hundred and forty dollars a year." They thought everybody was paying the same amount. Then Bill B ran up on the shore, and found out he was running short, and he rang up, saying about his feet. It's a nice, and I, I heard it was, our attorney said, say, sixty one half, half dozen, or six forty, another hand, so it would be one of them, half dozen, get there.
Would you support, um, the potential sixty thousand dollar survey? Or to go ahead and raise it, make everybody the same? I think that's kind of where we're at.
Oh, okay. That'll hold a lot of money for way out, sixty thousand, I'll almost, yeah, it's about, would you meet me there, right?
We've got a lot of money.
We don't have fifty thousand, it may be less or maybe more.
We've got a lot of money, sixty thousand dollars, stuck there a lot of things, maybe they take them here up in county, more board and study, I think.
Now, I think we need to look farther, the rest of this year, I think we're probably gonna look at a short haul, and have to check some, uh, contingency, but solid waste haul. There'll be some more revenue in there.
Are you firm, um, uh, wanting to go with the, uh, then running, go with the survey?
I know, I know, and, but, and, but, I, what happens is this. And I can, I can go either way, I, I, I wish there was a way, they don't want to pay. You can't make everybody happy when you say nothing. And I would just feel more comfortable if we had some justification. And the only way to get any justification, we're doing a lot, except we do, do, uh, some sort of curve, uh, but... I would, you know, I can't increase to one forty to one fifty four, or even halfway there. And should we try to make, and maybe we ought to, to look at the hard RV and hunting camps, and look at the C and D and some other avenues, we appreciate our listening. Uh, no easily out of it. But it, it's obvious that three of the four of us who are present today wanna go ahead and make everything across the board, uh, fair. And, you know, I keep thoughtful of that thing.
It makes a big wonder, because when you have a constituent, can you, can you, uh, shoot?
Well...
When you're talking about, well, you get, I'm saying, I already got impressed there.
And I have been friends long before I got on this campus, and one vote is not gonna make one thing. He could have a bad eye, and I'm not...
I mean, I know, I, I'm a man, but I, I know how it feels.
These my personal guys are well divided, yeah.
Makes it hard.
Well, it does make it difficult.
Makes it, you know, but...
Well, I'm...
Y'all look at the whole county, look at the whole county.
It would be very creepy if I, I would, it would be, you know...
I, I'll send an email out after last time I came in and called you all, to our membership. And the nicest members we have live out of town. Of those nicest family, about three percent have a sticker where they deposit in our dumpsters. Rest of them, taking back to where they came from, Tampa, Tampa City, Plankton, Fort Myers. Uh, you can, you can find justification of raising, because we are in the limo about, we don't have enough money to run the program. But do we have enough to say, you come up here on open day of hunting season, you come up here Thanksgiving, you come here Christmas, and you don't come back up here till next year? In April, the turkey season, and pay a hundred and fifty four dollars for garbage that you don't have disposed of in this county? And like I said before, these people spend money in this county. You don't believe, go up there and ask rocks. They buy gas up there, they buy ammunition up there, they buy food up there, all of these Walmart and the Bed Mart and all, they benefit their hunting season more than they do their coffee. And if we could, you know, as far as the sales tax, that's where we benefit from, on that. I wish there was a way that we could put a sales tax on solid waste. These are solid waste, that way you got everybody that's gonna pay. Everybody gonna be a part of it, whether you live in a camper, or you live in a mobile home, or you live in a, in a house. I paid a hundred and forty dollars, my daughter lives up on, uh, an acre of my land, and she lives in a, since we're a camper, she pays a hundred and forty dollars, plus she buys a tag for her, uh, motorhome. And she pays it every year, just like we do. Uh, because I told, she said, "We can get it, if we can get it to the hunt camp," I said, "No, you're not." I said, "If you're living there continuously, twelve months out of the year." But how can we justify charging somebody who stays here at the max three or four months out of the year, charging him a hundred and fifty four dollars for solid waste that many of them don't even use solid waste at all?
But that's their option, it's here, if they decide they wanna take nasty garbage back from wherever they're from, instead of putting it in the dumpster, and I noticed up there monkeys, the owner told me. Yeah, they put it in my dumpster, it's had to put its time, but they, he said, "I had to stand there and watch them do it." They fill my dumpster up in a company, and that's for whatever it was that told me a month, but, you know, it's just like with my rentals. Sometimes they're not ready for a long time, but I still pay a hundred and forty, I'm not using it either, so I think, when you get into that, whether you get it or you don't get it, well, this one he needs his first, well, this one he takes it back to Georgia or whatever, there's no way to monitor that. To me, that's just the cost of coming to hunt, obviously you've got money to hunt anyway, or you're gonna not come to carry, pet or carry, because you're about to pay a garbage fee. We got good hunting here, people look forward to coming here, you can't tell me they're not gonna come back, because they have to pay a garbage fee. That's just my take on it. Um, I think they should pay what everybody, I'm like him, everybody needs to pay the same, that's my, just my opinion.
I'm like, you said for, um, hunting camp, I'm gonna get that, like, forty dollars a week, I think.
They're paying forty dollars per, per unit, that's, that's for forty something. What I heard on the report, whatever that is. What I, what I'm wondering is, I moved some places, and you talk about sending a tax lift out for wood. I moved some places that got camper blocks, that there's nobody in there, but yet, they haven't been used, and the man hasn't had time to come up here and remove the campers and take them off his property. And he's still paying forty one dollars in something for those new camper, and nobody saves them, nobody uses them.
It's not his fault.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with you, I agree with you. But then you got some other places that are, people are using campers, and they're not paying anything.
That's probably true.
And if you catch those, you get those people who are not paying anything, you're gonna increase your revenue. Now, I've got nothing wrong with a person who brings in a, a travel trailer, and he sets it up, and he stays here twelve months out of the year, he should pay a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty four dollars. That's justified, but I don't see it justified to pay a hundred and fifty four dollars for his log item.
Well, we just don't really have a foolproof way of determining who's taking their garbage back and who's not living here. It's just like my uncle back when we were all young, and he had seven young ones, and we'd stay there a lot, and they were real, everybody was real poor. And when one of the young ones dumped, and none of them knew anything about it, so he might have lost seven of them up, and he quit lost seven of them. And it's just the same way with these campers, that you know which one is, but just, you know, all the friends, they can get them right on.
Now, Phil, I'm not saying, don't charge, or, don't charge the people who are taking it back. I'm saying, charge all the hunting camps, the face of the forty dollars or the fifty dollars or something, and whether they take it back or not, that's their business. We still got their money for disposal of their trash, even though they don't dispose any trash. But we got to have, as Roosevelt said, we got to have some way to justify if these people are staying there full-time or they're not staying there full-time.
We can never say it's not me.
I don't think so.
But Mark was saying that, yeah.
And I guarantee you, I guarantee you, there are people in this county, just like y'all are saying, there's people in this county who are running extension cords for other people's questions, and they're not getting charged at times, because they're gonna be using them, they don't have a power pole. And nobody's gonna have to check them, and it's generating just as much garbage as the person that's pulling the power pole.
Uh-huh, but I don't believe there's anybody that's gonna be able to determine if this mister, whoever it is, is taking his garbage back, and this one is not. Who is gonna be able, nobody's gonna be able to prove when they say, "Well, I take my garbage back," because we're gonna have somebody there every weekend, and say, "He takes his garbage back, which is the next, the next door he leaves here." I mean, why? This is impossible to determine.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying, don't charge, I'm not saying, don't charge the people who are thinking of taking it back. I'm saying, charge everybody in the hunting camp, that has a hunting camp, that saved it for four months or less, a lower rate than what you charge. Well, they take their garbage back or not, how you gonna determine that long statement, four months or less?
Always, you can always get a truck there.
And then you got all the rental people that's gonna say, "Here's my bill, I didn't have anybody there either." It's pretty simple, we're gonna lose some money that we're taking out right now, if you open that door.
Well, I want my brother to go to, with, with, people, maybe just want two more people to hire on the payroll, do all this, doing the way out.
That's why we just raise our budget the same thing, you and I, and I respect your opinion, uh, long as we know that, uh, but, um, you and I are not gonna agree on this.
Well, obviously, we're not.
Oh, that'll be okay.
But, you know, but I'm speaking as a brother of a hunter, who has ninety percent of our members are from out of town. And they pay garbage disposal fees down in their county, where they live. And some of them a little bit higher than we are, some of them a little bit lower than we are. But, you know.
Well, let me just.
I realize that you've got to do what you've got to do. But I'm trying to protect our county from, and there are some people who have the attitude where if you're gonna do that to me, then I'll go someplace else to hunt. I'll go to a different county and hunt, or I'll go to the Loudoun County and hunt, or I'll go to Madison County to hunt, and, you know.
Well, we made a little few, and those few are not paying that much anyway, but the whole thing is you're representing a hunting club. As the community, I'm not representing an elite, elite few. I'm representing twenty-three thousand people. And I'm trying to look after the people that have lived here, that worked a day in and day out in Taylor County, their family's house. And we're talking about going along there to just have to pay for something that somebody else is doing. What's the problem you can tell us?
Well, I realize that. I served on a commission in Madison for years. It wasn't easy job to do that when you had to raise gas prices, you had to raise fuel prices and everything, but I know where you're coming from. But one gesture to pay is, it seems like y'all throwing that out. Let's go to a hundred and fifty-four dollars, um, for people who are full time and raise these people who are block time up. The city's the way to do like fifty-four, fifty-five dollars a year, and it should bring you more money than what you got now.
It's still not fair.
Let me add the board of this. You can give me, uh, appetite for two tiers system. All RV hunting camps. Hunting camps, there's a different classification from all the rest of the RVs that are not hunting camps.
They're gonna play fishing games and that.
Well, that's where everything's got a lot of problems in it, but you could, you could say everybody pays the same thing. Unless you're a hunting camp, and then you pay a third or a half, whatever it is. And to prove that you're a hunting camp, you go up here and leave a tax collector. And you get the list of hunting camps that are in the hunting club. You justify whether you're a light bill, maybe you're lighting a little gill of honey camp. And that won't work on the tax collector, I know. Uh, I just thought that I was, as I thought, two tiers system. Hunting camps, we seem different than all the others, but then give that, we're gonna bring it up. Then, then they're gonna come up and want to say, well, I want the same, the same thing from my, I'm a fish camp.
Right.
You know, what to do to fish camps and hunting camps. So if you keep thinking this thing through, that won't work either. Now, uh, there's a man. I am not a man.
Never asked my question.
What's the law, Phil?
Talking about. I think I'm just wondering, eight dollars a month, time twelve, nine sixty, is that what it is? Eight times twelve, nine sixty, okay. You're talking eight dollars a month? That's what we're talking about, right? Well, it would be, they're paying forty dollars a month, about forty-six dollars a month now.
Yeah.
And you need.
Yeah, I'm not mad at you.
It's here. Okay, I'll say, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying, everybody's paying a hundred and forty dollars. Looks like to me, eight dollars more per month to the, to the hunting clubs or, or, or RVs or whatever, it's only eight dollars more per month.
No, it's a year, um.
No, eight dollars more per month, eight times twelve, nine sixty.
Yeah, eight dollars a month, it's not much money. If you can afford all that other stuff I was trying to earlier anyway. Dog club, membership, beer.
Dog, uh, you got, it were all beer. One twelve pack's all some bitch in the house. Hello.
And I'm gonna teach them that.
That got, that got the hours.
Mark, you have a way out there for hunting camps?
Sure, absolutely. Give me two more people. Nah, nah. Nah, um, we're, we're doing it right now, um, by just going during the hunting season. We go, get the heat, ugly and all that good stuff, and go out there and go through the, through the woods and stuff. Um, so, I mean, that, that's how we're identifying them right now. Ordinance, I, I have to look at ordinance again, I don't know exactly how to define a hunting camp, but I think it just looks and adds a hunting camp. I don't think it says any particular, but that, that can be identified.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and here's the thing, I mean, we're, we're calling it hunting camp, and now when we get down to the beach during the scout season, and we have, you know, a part-time RV down there, we call them a hunting camp also. So, I mean.
But you have people in that field, we were, we were talking about you process earlier.
Yeah, I have one person, one person will see them. And now, granted, everybody else that works in the office, that's either looking in the newspaper, or they're, when they're riding a ride, they see something, and they're writing it down, and we're going back and checking it. Yeah. And see some place, someone like you're different.
Did you know which hunters take their dogs back from the police for this?
If I was, no, no.
No, you don't.
But if I was a hunter, I would burn my garbage that, that I wanted to, what I do. Except for the bottles, you can't. And maybe they're just gonna be strung out on the road, and I know Canton, there was one time I had to clean a day, and picking up bottles and natural light cans up in the, it looked like a beer toilet, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, this way.
Dave's most trash is beer. If they was banned beer in the hunting club, it put everybody in danger when you're down there, because a lot of them run, running down the road.
That's part of the hunt.
If they banned it, it would be gone.
Part of the hunt, things are banned.
No, it's not.
With the old, you know, uh, uh.
Mark, do you have, you don't, I don't, I want to ask you, did you have a way to identify the people that are living in sheds? I know, and I see people living in sheds, I mean, sheds that are built and sheds that, no sheds, no sheds that are involved.
Right.
And they may have an extension cord running over to somebody else. Probably seems to be quite a few, but there's maybe some in the city now, or people. And if they're living there, they're not, most of them probably are not currently compedex extension.
Right.
They don't have a power deal, but.
They don't have a permit.
Which, which is why we lose the revenue, part of the revenue from such a living, uh, situation as that. And, and we're wondering, how can you get a handle on that?
There's probably, I mean, when they get a permit, here's how we're doing that. They get a permit, and then we're able to capture it that way, we'll go out and check it. Um, Bruce is out there looking too at the same time, um.
Oh, okay.
How do you?
If they don't get a permit, then.
And they're, they're off the map.
For comment.
Yeah, they're off, they're off the grid. Um, code enforcement would be on this side, would be the one that sees something going up, and they would.
So would they come up with, see if each one has a permit?
The permit catches it on our end. Um, I mean, I've got a guy, he's out there, uh, today he's not out there, but he's out there almost every day during this time of year and hunting season. I mean, that's more than, you're looking at, what was that, eight months worth of, seven or eight months worth of him being in the field.
And camp, right?
No, 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 just camp.
We're talking about city, city.
The city, we don't have anything to do with, the city does their own, we don't do anything to the city park garbage collection.
But, I mean, we still park city residents, not, no, no, it's just camp.
Yeah, yeah. That's just camp.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, in a perfect world, the permit gets pulled for that camper or RV that somebody's gonna live in, they get a power pole, we know about it, we get them.
Or if we get a complaint.
Or if we get a complaint, then we check it.
Code enforcement, no, the co- code enforcement doesn't control, I'm gonna make that clear, they don't control what these fourteen folks can maybe not be paying their assessment.
Yeah, more complaint based operating, yeah.
And I, I know there was a question asked about if someone filed, claims compedex extension, do, do they pay the whole one?
Yeah, yeah.
So you monitor that.
Yeah, Bruce is off, my Bruce is off, I get all those to him, and we, we get them when we're in a complaint on the.
But the issue, why you go up there, sure, just charge everybody the same rate, that way you're not missing anybody. And then identify the ones that don't have a permit, or they got the extension cord running over them, or living there, uh, 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 at that time.
Right.
Identify those, and they have to pay a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty-four, whatever it comes in.
Right, sure, I, I think it is, now, I, the only thing I'm wanting is, as I said over there, when we made the decision to go through the third for the hunting camp. And two things happened, the heat came off of this board, and the heat came off of tax collector's office. The Jack Seder and Tim came over and talked us about it, Tim was right. It was a nightmare, and there's not so much heat on tax collector's office because you turn around and say, well, you gotta talk to your board member. You know, and so the heat really comes back to this board. Um, so, yeah, so, I mean, just, just know that. Um, do I think it's fair personally that somebody would have to pay for a hunting camp when they're only there three months out of the year? Personally, I don't, personally, I don't. But now, I was the guy that if somebody had already had a dwelling from family one forty at that time, the other dwellings that they had, they weren't ringing them out at the beach or a hunting camp. I didn't say they didn't have to pay at all. But that defeats the purpose, I think, of what you guys are looking at. But that's where I was originally on, on the board.
You know, I have constituents that say, tell me, I don't have any children at school. I should, why should I have to pay? So, I mean, everybody would have an argument of why they shouldn't pay something.
Absolutely.
But, you know, that's the cost we live in, that's the cost we all pay. You know, if you don't have, or live in an RV, for whatever reason, you gotta pay.
Right.
And you want your, your kids to be taken care of, so you pay your school tax. I mean, that's just part of life.
Right.
I don't, he's a doctor, never had any, just a little man, just a fat doctor.
Right.
But I paid for it.
That's not, I had a man.
Yeah. There's, you know, I got all the background in the, in the electoral, and I had my career, a couple of boards for a long, long time. There's something that's called a banquet facility yard, obviously familiar with it. If you get a light bill and pay tax, I don't care if you use zero kilowatt hours, this will be about twenty-nine or thirty, thirty-two dollars. Because there's investment in trucks, and wires, and transformers, and better structures, all that over there has to be covered by somebody. And the fact that you're connected to the grid has a, has a cost.
Sure.
Get a little bit, take a meter out. Well, the same thing was on this place. We've got seven or eight little offsite, we've got an incinerator out there, you know, on, on the car place. We pick up three and D, we do all these services, we got trucks. So then, there's a cost that everybody needs to pay part of.
Right.
To have that service available, basement facility yard. Now, what that is, is I don't know, and that's why I put in my big success, but I don't know, I'm not sure the state's gonna tell us anything. They may go back for fifty-five dollars, and say, y'all need to charge the less. I don't know, that doesn't help, or you might be charged everybody the same. I, I just don't know if that's a valid assessment of the burden.
You know, like.
Uh, uh, obviously, I said, I said more time, thinking about this, and then they just started, Bed Mart.
I can imagine, it's a blur.
Yeah, I hear from that. And I'm like, it's a blur.
Yes. You can do that now. You've got a gas line up to your house, you've got a water line up to your house, you've got a fuel line up to your house. You cannot have nobody for a year, and they charge you all that.
My gas is a dollar, you never sell it though.
Same thing, I mean, it is.
With the grinder, something stuck.
It's a enormous cost that we pay down there, and they're spending much and much, and we did not use it.
I tell you, it's a little bit of homework.
And when I question how high it is, just like he just explained, you've got to have this, and this, and this, and this, and we need your money to make sure that we can keep the operation going. Whether you use this or that or not, we still have to, have to keep it going, so that's a good analogy, thank you for that.
I'm, I'm sorry. Maybe they can always with a feeling, uh, alright.
We talked, we've talked about for how many hours? We've gotta decide, uh, what we're gonna do.
Yours up. And if three of them are, I'll look for y'all.
Commissioner Louie, what do you wanna do?
I'm gonna put everybody to one point.
Commissioner Dan?
One point.
One point.
Well, I said, I wouldn't sit a longer, I'll have to go with one point.
Right, and this is a gift card coming to pass, but we'll see what happens.
Alright, Mark, that's not gonna make it any harder on you then. Now, that's, it ain't gonna, it's not, we used to have it when we.
Yeah, when I was up there, yeah.
It makes it easier on me, I just some friends come make it harder on you, so, but it is.
It will.
When they come up first, the plums, give them myself one of them. I'll put a little amount of fun down, go, maybe, right, right, on, on, we got six, they gone.
If I lose my job over a hundred dollars to somebody that spends thousands of dollars in that, I would be.
Uh, well.
Okay, next, I'll do, thank you, Mark.
Hello, appreciate you coming home. Uh, for all.
We're gonna do, number five, the county's, uh, on that survey, I think it seems like we have to consensus not.
Not do the survey.
About, 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 about.
Not worry about the survey.
And consensus I'm hearing from the board is to, I guess it'd be to, um, have her attorney to draft and order them. To raise the solid waste assessment, to make, well, actually, we revealed that we're meant for these, the, the.
Or, or maybe in a minute. You know, he's a lawyer, he wants to make a.
So, can y'all have a sign that says our, they're.
Uh, celebrating in, there's our call, private, that's a hundred, ninety-six thousand dollars, it'll be under thirty.
I think, I'm worried, but I guess we did it. Oh, I'll have to submit something in my computer, so.
I doubt the topic. I know we, I mean, in deep with, we pay it, it's down the, it's all those dollars, I'm loving to get that to you.
I, I, I have to ask you a question. Now, in the original agreement, or one stuff, the original act, the, the, the four counties agreed that the top six counties must go handbill. That they had to be given, people elected money because that's all their garbage is great. And all these things is a agreement, it's for the four people, and I'm, four conditions that are required. To do this, and then I'm here, probably have to go back to the county commission without a hitch. But, uh, Jackson County, they're not gonna do that, they can't, Addison doesn't have to say anything because they don't get that, those camps. So you can figure about the limit, but anyway, but this county's not gonna do, the change is gonna be a lot. So it'll be a two, 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 it's safe. So I don't know how to.
Well, let me ask you this, that didn't make, say any, through the, the state county in my book at that time. Were you even that?
That's right. That, well, I was, I was not here, but I've heard that you go out and tell a story and learn your stuff. But, start by, I was a local county, we're gonna go together in front of, and they just destroyed a big landfill, and they kept eating off. So by the side was selected, and got down to three counties, they learned thousands of, yeah. And, and, and they just didn't work, you need some more garbage in there. So, they're talking, picking camp, but like was over in the brush. So that country, big county, that, like with the, with the price. You know, that's the legal vacancy cost. And one county decided they're going to do this on their own, it's getting less and less, and now they all work with the, with the, with the Georgia. And more money than they would, they're gonna come over town. But their county's membership won't talk to us. We need to lock that down. To bring the county's generator in the county, not the city of the, of, of mayor, they bring it over, they're like, yeah, okay. And we gave them a dollar a ton less price. Then we replaced, and then I said, no, it's one thing.
The board did that.
So we figured out a way that we could reverse each of us.
A dollar.
So we get a little cash, Daniel gets a little cash, value of three months. It might not be four, five thousand dollars, but it makes us pay the same thing. That, that, that's what they thought they had to pay. But to get them to come, we had to give them what they're always called, the most favorable nation staff.
Yeah.
You know, a little cheaper price.
Yeah.
So we need some more garbage.
We only need one customer, we can go buy, get the next.
We need more, the more, the sentences are all gonna be about things. We got eighty employees, we got the landfill, we have the millionaires back, so I put them in. If we could take the other, other thousand of garbage, then when you take this amount of money we need, divide by that's the tonnage, that number comes out smaller, which means you can reduce the rate. If we have more garbage over there, suppose we want to hire more people. Or I buy another bulldozer. Don't you know anybody that made the home, put some garbage, just clean garbage, uh, stuff? We tried Leon County, we tried Water County, now you go reach out and took all of it, the haul is all out of town. Back when he was done by buying our own truck and hauling it in here, but we can't make the numbers work. But if you figure out a way to save up that forty thousand, you, uh, we're certainly good.
Better than that, that was crazy.
Yeah, we need more garbage, we need more tonnage. If it costs the same and tonnage is greater, if you divide out, the cost per ton is, uh, now we can lower our tonnage. We can lower our, our, our fee, we're paying forty-three dollars down and seventy dollars, we're like fifty dollars. If you wanna lower that salary, that board over there could do that next time we have to leave. Don't ask for any money for new self-transporting trucks, yeah. Don't ask for any money for new bulldozers and that high price. And there were some times that we got to have a bulldozer and it cost five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Just like, tell me, yeah, some of the checks would go to part of it. Without a problem, you know?
Yeah.
And I'll argue that maybe it's Mark, before you did the mess with all that money, they didn't buy it, everything, well, you do that, you pay them. So it's part of pretty good way of it. And we know we're in the low there, that, that we can take all the garbage, national garbage, for at least the next seventy-five years on the face we got. So we're not gonna run out of place because we hope in the next seventy-five years, technology's gonna change and there'll be some better way to dispose of garbage.
We've also to keep that in mind at the end.
Probably be a, I don't know, well, right, right. You know, that's the topic, that, that, now, they're all over, landfills, all places in that county. We actually had a wedding not too long ago up there, on top of that garbage pit. I don't know, I don't know what to do about any bird or anything.
Uh, what's this, uh, this need doesn't affect the one that I, I expect haulings to be whole? They should have everything that they need, an allocation, shouldn't have issues and problems. I'm gonna be expecting a lot, a lot, which, we're gonna provide the money now. I wanna make sure that the services are there, it's good, and, um, I want about eighty-five or more men that take to the recovery of, of stuff there, of, from the storm, saying, we totally can't bring but one load. Uh, so, you know, we need good vans and we need good service and we need good equipment. The tractor that sits poor needs to be fixed so we can burn, and, um, yeah.
I want to say, I want to say, Mark, the thought is like, we need to build a way with the cars and have nothing but sticks and, and put a year, year date, not any twenty on them, yeah. And then following year, not any twenty-one, whatever. That way, if somebody went to buy a new vehicle, they can't, they can't cut the stick off, one foot stick, you can't always get it off and put it on another vehicle. They can't be passing the stick around, it needs to be on that car somewhere or that truck. And if they want another, they can come up here, bring their old stick and get a new one.
Okay, I agree with that, do you agree with that, Commissioner?
I agree with that, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, let's do that, let's just go down and do it.
That's all, I, I, I'll, I'll hear it.
You brought that up, I know, it's just a hand tool.
I don't do anything to it. They need the year, they need to be a, a color for one year and a, and a day on.
A different color, that's right.
A different, they're not gonna be like a lump of glue.
That's right. Anything else? Okay, county's legislature, number five. Nothing? Okay, everybody ready to go home? Have a good day.